Okay, I'd like to call, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Carangelo?
Present.
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Ms. Gloss? Mr. Hong? Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winston?
Here.
President Lacks.
Here, we have a call. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, you know what? If you would, yes, please remain standing. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. It is with deepest regret and our sincere condolences that we announce the passing of SSO Carl Mervay. Carl worked for the East Brunswick Public Schools since 2018, assigned to Churchill Junior High as a school security officer. Carl passed away Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 at home. He was 61. Born and raised in New Brunswick, he lived in North Brunswick before moving to Milltown 17 years ago. Carl was a retired police officer with the New Brunswick Police Department. He was a team leader and firearms instructor for the Middlesex County Special Operations Response Team and the New Brunswick Police Department. Carl was very proud and honored to serve in the police department. It was his lifelong dream. We were honored to have known him and worked alongside Carl in the East Brunswick Public School District. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. And as usual, I'm going to say good evening to everyone and then go straight into our... Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned said subjects and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned said subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience motion carries. Thank you, we shall see you in approximately an hour. Okay, welcome back. Hi, my friends. This is more like it. I always like when we come back after the break because it's a little lonely when everyone knows we're going into closed session and then we come back to this and this is just... We have special visitors today. Alright, so we are going to proceed with the business of the Board and for my friends in front, you get a special treat because you get to be here to hear Dr. Valesky give his superintendent's report. Make sure it's really good for them today.
Let's see how impressed they are. Good evening, everyone. And for the benefit of the audience, I'm going to read as fast as I possibly can. We have a lot of information to cover. On March 29th, Frost Elementary School hosted Career Day. Parents and grandparents from all grade levels presented to individual classes about their jobs. Some topics included what a typical workday is like, responsibilities, why they chose their career, favorite part about the job, and what character traits are important for their job. Students followed up with presentations with career exploration activities, including creating a resume and completing a career interest survey. Also at Frost, the 4th grade students participated in a spring event called the Peep Project, where they created a diorama using peeps. And I'm talking about the candy confection. Students depicted a scene from their favorite memory from 4th grade. Memorial Elementary students learned about different cultures from all over the world. Students in grades 2nd, 3rd, and 4th were assigned a country to research and on March 30th, they turned their classroom into a presentation of that country. Students in kindergarten and 1st grade toured the world by stopping into different countries to learn about the language, food, clothing, sports, and leisure activities. Bound Monroe Elementary School held a Family STEM Night this month, funded by a grant awarded by the National PTA and the Bear Fund, established by Bear Pharmaceuticals. Families participated in shared, hands-on activities to solve logic puzzles and mathematical challenges. There are a variety of demonstrations and experiments to learn more about geology, chemistry, lasers, chromatography, and pollinators. Through the collaboration of parents, the East Brunswick Environmental Commission, local businesses, community members, East Brunswick High School students, and the East Brunswick Youth Council, STEM Night was fantastic and a fun way to bring families together to inspire children to pursue careers in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Students and Diane Cassioli and Edith Weinstein's 9th grade English class participated in Poetry Out Loud at Churchill Junior High School. Not only did students showcase their ability to analyze and understand poetry, but they also perfected their public speaking skills and confidence in front of an audience. They chose poems to memorize and perform to their class as well as before a panel of guest judges based in the media center throughout the week. Students received strong feedback from judges, including other English and history teachers, the instructional coach Craig Siegel, and media specialist Brian McInerney, sorry, and administrators. Assistant Principal Alexia DeLuca performed her own original poem and it was a wonderful and positive atmosphere to celebrate poetry. East Brunswick High School received re-accreditation from the Middle States Association Commissions on Elementary and Secondary Schools. And in their press release, it stated that accreditation is a voluntary process that helps the entire school community, including administrators, teachers, parents, and students, think about the future they want to create and how to set goals to get them there. Earning accreditation shows what a school is committed to doing and everything it can do to support its students. Middle States accreditation is a multifaceted evaluation process that school and school systems voluntarily use to demonstrate they are meeting a defined set of research-based performance standards. And the accreditation process begins with a self-study that's conducted by the school or school system and requires input from school leaders, teachers, parents, and students. And that's followed up by a self-study with a team of volunteer educators from Middle States who conduct a peer review. So that's a lot to say about Middle States, but the high school was re-accredited and we congratulate them on that. And thank you to Assistant Principal Russ Patronko for leading this process at the high school. The high school robotics team, ASRIA, had a great time at the district championship this month. It's the first time the team has qualified for the championship since its founding in 2017. The students made great connections to each of the 60 teams competing. They finished in the qualifying round with a winning record of 6, 5, and 1 and worked as a well-oiled machine to repair, upgrade, and cheer for our robot. Although they didn't win, Snoopy, and that's the robot's name, and I've got to believe that might be in homage to Mrs. Anderson because I think Snoopy was one of their favorite characters, placed 35th out of 60 competing robots. So many of the teams we beat have been established for decades, so each victory was another nod to our students for working so well on design, construction, and coding to make it come together. And for all of our youngest people in the audience up front, I bet a lot of you will be interested in robots as you go through the school system and robotics and coding and mathematics. So we'll look forward to that. Congratulations to our esports team. The Overwatch Esports Team ended their season ranking 2nd in the state. Our Bears competed at the Garden State Esports League Championships at King University, where they dominated their semifinals match and headed to the finals. In the end, our Bears ended their win streak with Scotch Plains High School coming out on top and taking the belt home. We would like to thank the parents, faculty, and administration for their undying support of our district's very first esports team and a special shout-out to the East Brunswick Education Foundation for making sure our Bears went to the state finals in their brand-new jerseys. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Greater New Brunswick Area, for their work to help register high school students 17 years and older to vote. There were about 49 completed registration forms by the end of the day and with dozens more going home with students in need of additional pieces of information. And I'd like to thank advisors Caitlin Schenk and Nicole Kenny, as well as the student volunteers from the Row Capa History Honor Society for their assistance in helping their classmates get registered. On Tuesday, April 11th, 53 high school juniors and seniors were inducted into the Triumph Music Honor Society. The students gave a pre-induction concert with multiple solo and duet performances. The students in this organization volunteered tirelessly to support the many music department events in East Brunswick schools and their contributions to East Brunswick arts are greatly appreciated. The Triumph Music Honor Society is led by high school music teacher Zachary Gates. On Tuesday, April 12th, the Arts Department hosted the first-ever East Brunswick Night of Percussion. The concert featured performances from eight different percussion ensembles from grades 5 through 12 and it was a fun evening filled with so many talented students and directors. In our counseling department, Nigirdred Rivers, one of our school counselors at Churchill Junior High School, led the students of Uncommon Ground and International Cultures Club in a diversity initiative. The students came up with the idea to visit Warrens Dorfer and Central Elementary Schools to express not only the importance of embracing their own culture, but other cultures as well. Our 7th, 8th, and 9th grade students created presentations of cultural expression to the 4th grade students. Some students wore cultural attire or shared traditional artwork and aesthetics with their presentations. Following their presentations, the Churchill students helped our 4th graders replicate a flag that best represented their own culture and ultimately a mural that was created with flags in each building. The message behind our students' initiative was to be the light in each other, see the light in each other. Our students of Uncommon Ground and the International Cultures Club walked away feeling empowered and our 4th grade students walked away having been immersed in a celebration of diversity. The high school counseling department hosted a job fair. Local vendors were invited to interview students and set them up with summer employment. Vendors included Lakeview Day Camp, Shop Right, Flyables, Total Party, and EB Parks and Recreation, among others. Over 115 students and the superintendent attended interviews and many students were also completing their working papers, which I'm still working on. Congratulations to our March High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course for modeling exceptional character.
Well, can we expect to see esports on this list going forward? I can't see, am I missing?
I would...
They're correct?
It is not on there, yet.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
Just yet.
Is that something? So we could expect to see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
No problem. I needed to give everybody a minute to read all the names anyway.
You needed a breath.
Yeah, yeah. We're almost there. Spring Signing Day was Thursday, April 13th and we again had numerous student athletes committing to play at their college or university.
Don't, you're going to kill me. I'm so... I don't usually interrupt this much.
No, she does.
This was on your behalf, madam.
I thank you.
Because even without my glasses, I see a very handsome, tall, young man up there. Am I incorrect?
You are correct. That's my son. He'll be attending Drew University in the fall to play lacrosse.
So Dylan, Dylan's on the far right.
Dalton.
Or Dalton, sorry, Dalton on the far right.
Where would those interviews have been held?
Tonight, I think.
Yeah.
So anyway, this was a wonderful event in the media center at the high school. We were able to celebrate our students' opportunity along with their families to compete at the next level.
I'm going to interrupt. It really was so nice.
Yeah.
It was a great event.
Frank does a nice job.
It was great.
And I wish Dalton a really good year.
So for Heather and I, Jeff, well, some of us have seniors up here and so it's funny seeing a lot of these kids that we've known since they're your age. So our kids were in kindergarten together and now I'm looking at them as big kids. That's going to be you guys.
All right, that's the end of my stuff.
That's it? Okay. So if no one has any objections, because I can't stop looking at these adorable little faces in the front row, I'm actually going to go a little bit out of order. And if it's okay, I'd love to have them go before. If our adults will excuse my... I would love to have our friends here. So we have, learning across the district is something that I can speak on behalf of the Board. We love to see here because we get to see what's going on in our schools and we get to see some terrific young faces. And actually, you'll see we go the gamut from our youngest to our high school kids. But we have a treat tonight in that we have learning across the district from Lawrencebrook School. We have a kindergarten class, kindergarten classes, excuse me, that thanked the EBEA for receiving a pride grant which provided books, crafts, and other activities that focus on various seasons, holidays, and cultural celebrations. Participating in these seasonal and multicultural activities with their classmates enabled the students to fully embrace inclusion and diversity. And some of you have, I know I hear some young voices in the audience. Are you going to be speaking? Are the kids going to be up there the whole time? Or are you going to be in front?
Where would you like them to go?
No, no, are they going to speak at the podium?
They're going to speak, they don't have to go to the podium?
No, 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 no. My question, because what I was going to say is if any of the siblings want to come and maybe sit up here so they get a front row spot, would that be okay? Okay, that's a good idea. Yeah, I got you. So if your kids are just going to be at the podium, I'd love to see the other kids because I see some young faces that probably won't get to see them back there. No takers? Nobody wants to sit in the front? I'll sit with you on the floor, come on.
How about Mrs. Dunn? Do you want to come sit up front?
You want to come sit? I'll come. I'm going to get seated. Come on, Mrs. Dunn.
Oh, she's not going to...
Come on.
She's going to need a chair. Lori.
Okay, sorry. All right, my friends. I tried to help your young friends out, but I am going to get my front row seat back. And I am so excited for Lawrencebrook tonight. All right, good evening. So we are here celebrating the Lawrencebrook School and the kindergarten teachers wrote a grant and the grant is for seasons and holidays and we incorporated that into our curriculum. And we are here tonight to show you a little bit about what we learned with the grant.
We just want to say thank you to the EBEA Pride Committee. With their funds that they awarded us, we were able to buy crafts and books and all kinds of supplies to do activities with all the children and they got to learn about each other's traditions, each other's holidays, and they thoroughly enjoyed doing this throughout the school year.
In November, we celebrated Thanksgiving. All the kindergarteners came to our class. We had a nice feast together. We talked about what we are thankful for and how we celebrate with our families at home.
One of the winter holidays we learned about is, I learned about Hanukkah. We learned about lighting the menorah and playing the dreidel game. Even though my family is not Jewish, I still had fun playing the dreidel game with my family.
We, we, we learned about Holi. Holi is a holiday celebrated in India to show that spring is here.
We made colorful sun catchers to hang in our windows at home.
This year we learned that our flag is important, symbol.
We use the flag every day, especially on President's Day, Memorial Day, and in the summer on 4th of July.
That was amazing, my kindergarten friends. So this is going to be a really tough act to follow, so I feel bad for anyone that has to go after that. But I'm just curious, if you guys have a few more minutes in you, what may be interesting for you to see, as I told you, you're some of our youngest learners, we have some of our oldest learners here. So would you like to see the presentation by the high school IPEL students? Yes? Okay, yes, okay.
Pressure's on.
Pressure's on. But as I said, as a former IPEL student, I have faith in you guys. So now that you've experienced Lawrencebrook, we're going to see the high school. They are going to be telling us about their urban plan, which I have to say was a joy. Is Mr. Palowski here as well?
Unfortunately, he's not able to make it.
He's not? Okay, I'm sorry to hear that. Mr. Paluso, would you like to talk more about these wonderful students and what they're going to be presenting tonight?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening. I'm the proud department chairperson for the Social Studies and Media Services Department here at East Brunswick Public Schools. And I want to start by thanking Mrs. Lacks, Dr. Valesky, the Board, administrators, for inviting us to present at tonight's meeting. And what's become a proud part of our tradition of excellence in curriculum enrichment and community partnerships in the Social Studies Department, Mr. Palowski's Institute for Political and Legal Education, or IPEL 1 Honor Students, participated for the sixth year in the Urban Planning Project sponsored by the Urban Land Institute. The ULI partners with schools across the nation with the goal of educating the next generation of leaders in the nuances and challenges of creating and revitalizing thriving communities while addressing numerous infrastructure, community issues of the nature, such as affordable housing. In addition to the invaluable classroom instruction from their excellent teacher, Mr. Palowski, who was unfortunately unable to be here tonight, the ULI experts in various industries and our local government leaders, the students worked directly with these folks as they created proposals for a vibrant and fully developed urban center. Students on each team, and we're very excited to have our winning team here tonight, considered all facets of city planning, including balancing budgetary demands with input from diverse constituent groups along with a range of political, social, and economic issues. And as one of the industry experts who you might know very well, Mrs. Lacks, I'd like to quote former speaker Tiponia, who was famous for saying, "All politics is local." And the students definitely learned that through this project. As many of us in this room know, change requires vision, careful planning, building relationships with community stakeholder groups of varying opinions, and attention to detail, and patience with ourselves and those around us. These are lessons our students were required to apply throughout the many phases of the project. On March 28th, all of Mr. Palowski's IPEL student teams presented their final proposals to development experts and Mayor Cohen right here in this room. And tonight, the Social Studies Department is proud to have the winning team here to share their proposal, explain a little bit about their roles on the project team, and answer any questions that you may have about their experience. I think you will quickly see these amazing young people learned a great deal from our generous volunteer experts, the project demands, and the realities of the change process, essentially what it takes to have a vision and enact change in the real world. Thank you again for having us and for your continued support of the Social Studies Department programs. And I'm excited for you to hear from our talented students. So I'm going to start, if you all want to come over here, and I'll start by passing it over to Isaac, who's going to get us started.
Hello, how's everyone doing? I know we probably can't beat these ladies and gents over here, but I would like to first start off by introducing myself. My name is Isaac Ampell and I am a senior in EBHS. And let me first start off by discussing the Urban Plan Institute in general. So we are basically set in Yorktown, Virginia, redeveloping the fictional Elmwood District. And everybody here has different jobs that they work on, that they work on. And to start off, I am the marketing director. And my job is to basically take what these guys put on paper and to sell it to all of you guys and to convey that. And essentially, oh, sorry. And essentially, some unique responsibilities that come with being the marketing director is to not just differentiate what you say and your product, but also how you say it and how to convey it. For instance, you need to be able to not just make your product stand out, but also to show you and to show your team's chemistry and to show how you were able, your little details that make your area, your product better than everyone else's. And that is what I was there to do, to market it and to sell it. And we did that. And here we go.
Hello. My name is Katyaini Ayar. I'm a senior at EBHS and I was the site planner for this project. So I was in charge of making sure that all of our ideas were executed and we could visualize it and put it out in front of you guys for everyone to see. Okay. This was our site plan. We collaborated and worked together to make sure that each and every single spot on this site plan was filled and perfectly executed to make sure that we could sell this plan and make sure... So we could sell this plan. We, I was in charge of placing all of these blocks and helping everyone see the plan before we presented it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sidharth Ramaswamy and I am a senior at East Brunswick High School. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Paluso and Mr. Palowski. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here with us today, but this would not be possible without him. So my job was, I was a financial analyst and as many of you know, money makes everything work. Money makes the world go round. And one of the biggest issues that we had was funding this project and the ideas we had. Now, I can't lie and say this was the most easy thing I've ever done. It was very, very frustrating. And I love all of these guys, but it got very, very frustrating, kind of, putting all the pieces together. But my job was ensuring that we hit some key thresholds and some of the thresholds were a minimum rate of return of 13.5%, 10% affordable housing, and $9.5 million to the city.
Bless you.
Bless you. And we were able to surpass all of those numbers and hit an equilibrium point where we're benefiting everyone around us and benefiting us as investors and creators. And yeah, essentially, that was just my job. I just was in charge of handling the very, very frustrating spreadsheets and doing a lot of, lot of math and constantly arguing with my team members on making sure everything balances, but it worked out.
You're ready for the work, world.
It worked very, very well. I'm very proud of all of us and we did a phenomenal job. I'm going to pass it over to my other teammate.
Hi, my name is Samina Chidawala. I'm a sophomore at EBHS and my job in this project was a neighborhood liaison. And essentially, what I did was I had a bunch of letters that were given to me by the neighborhood and they were all from different kinds of people, different groups. And I had to see what they wanted and see if we could give them what they wanted. And of course, as anyone knows, that you can't please everybody. So it was very difficult trying to find the right... so it was very difficult trying to find the right groups that wanted what they wanted. How much should I give the people? If we, we had to obviously compromise with some groups. But essentially, I think we came up with a good plan that worked with everybody. And as a neighborhood liaison, I had to also make sure that what we were putting into the neighborhood worked with what was already developed around, what, around the neighborhood. So, we had a lot, we had a college nearby, we had a lot of family apartments. So, we put in things like a skate park for college kids to come enjoy. And we put entry-level jobs for all types of people to come and work at Elmwood. We also had to make sure about the affordable housing, and we had a variety of affordable housing for all different kinds of incomes. And we had three historical buildings that we, one of them which we kept, and one of them which we had to keep, and we mixed it for something like a police substation, and two of which we, one, we kept for another mixed-use, and one we demolished. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, uh, thank you for having us all here tonight. Uh, my name is Shloke Patuck, I'm a junior at East Brunswick High School, and my role as part of our team was the Environment and Equity Director. Um, this was one of the newer roles that was given, uh, this year, along with the whole urban plan project. Uh, and essentially, my job was focused around, um, two, uh, core things, which I tried to address within our presentation. Uh, the first thing was about the environment, about making sure that our redevelopment of the district was environmentally, uh, friendly and eco-safe. And, uh, in order to do that, uh, one of the responsibilities I had was gauging the amount of net-zero energy buildings that were created within the district, uh, which was a setting that we had on our financial plan. Uh, so we had to balance the amount of net-zero energy buildings we could have with the cost that it would invoke. So that definitely was a topic of much discussion. Uh, there was also a question of open space, uh, within the area. We wanted to make sure that, uh, our district didn't seem super clustered within this sort of city environment. And, uh, so because of that, uh, we had to decide exactly where we would put park spaces, where we wanted green areas, how it would be beneficial to the people living around there. And, uh, the, uh, second part of my ta, of my job was, uh, looking at the equitability within our district. So obviously, we didn't want our district to be comprised of one sole demographic or like, uh, cater to like, a specific, uh, a specific subset of people. We wanted it to be very inclusive of all different types of people and cultures. And, uh, one of the ways that we implemented that was within our site plan, we were able to put in, uh, a retail district along one of the streets that we envisioned would be used by, uh, different types of local cultural shops or restaurants of, uh, different cultures, maybe like Mediterranean restaurants across from, you know, Japanese sushi places. That was, uh, one of the ideas that we envisioned in order to, um, complete these tasks. Uh, and while I talk about our presentation, uh, one of the, uh, key elements of our presentation that was able to really sell it to, uh, the Mock City Council was our slideshow up here, which we were all, worked very hard in order to, um, you know, make look very nice, in order to give off our sense of professionalism that we wanted to convey, as well as our site plan up front, which, uh, definitely added and enhanced our professionalism overall. So, uh, thank you all for listening to us, and, um, we hope you learn something.
Um, as, as I, as I said before, there's a very impressive, uh, group of, of young people who are destined to, uh, do great things, they're gonna be very successful in whatever they decide to do. I know that the panelists were really hoping to recruit some interns, maybe to work in redevelopment and in real estate, um, but we'll see what happens. So I, I would love to open it up if anyone has any questions or any, any comments and, uh, you know.
I'm gonna open it up, but I'm, since, since I get to speak. I have a couple of questions. So, um, the first one is, and, and I got to, to be there and see, now I don't remember. Now you didn't put in the homeless shelter, is that correct?
No, we didn't.
You did put in, okay, I didn't do it.
We called it a rezubilitation center.
Ah, so one of the things I find so fascinating about this project is, is they really do have to put in so many different factors. And so, you know, you heard about how they have to keep in there for the invite, the, well, the environmental's a new, but keeping in there the, um, oh my god, the Phoenix, uh...
Oh, yeah.
The historical, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words. Um, yes, so I always found it fascinating how you guys come up with these. And I am curious, do any of you plan to go into this? I know you're, you're, we have a couple of seniors there, I know we have a couple. I'm very impressed with my sophomore friend right there. But do you, do you see this having real-life applications for yourselves going forward? I mean, some of you are off to college in a few months, so have you thought about this as a career plan? Some of my seniors, no?
Um, well, I was originally planning on going into investment banking, so it's a little different field. However, um, I, I realize I'm pretty good with numbers, so that kind of gave me the head start. Perhaps when I'm a little bit older, or I retire from investment banking, I might head into this field. I, I mean, it's quite interesting.
So the fin, we have some finance people up here, right?
Oh, I, I like the, um, the idea of, um, you know, financial planning, along with, you know, mixing in the economic forecast and predicting things, I think it's pretty cool.
Excellent, I expect to see some of you up here, because there are, um, the gentleman on the end, the red shirt, and the guy in the glasses there, and myself, all went through this high school, so, you know. And as I said, a, a former IPL student myself, so you never know. You, you may wanna come back and, and be seated up here. I know my friend over there in 10th grade, he'll be back, you have time. I love it. But it's funny, when you said how hard it is working with people, that's, that's life. This is such a great life lesson, because you guys did the research, you did the work, and sometimes you find out that you could be as prepared as you are, and you may not agree with the person sitting next to you, and you have to figure out in terms of making that chips to your straight, how to, um, to make that work. And, and you have nine individuals up on this board, um, that come from all different backgrounds, all different, um, points of view, and that's what we do every time we're up here, is find a way to, to, you know, to work together. So, um, I have to say, I, I'm thrilled when you guys get to come and we get to see the winning ones. Um, I do wanna see if any other board members have questions, Mr. Win- So this is how you know what honest people the judges were, because Mr. Winston had a son that didn't, was not in the winning group, although he did a fantastic job, 'cause I got to see it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
What an introduction.
We're, we're honest people.
And that's why he's in therapy.
He did a fantastic job, but that's, yes.
No, I appreciate it.
We don't cheat, right? We're honest.
I think, yeah, I've, I've seen this a few times now throughout the years, and Mr. Paluso, I think you do a marvelous job with it. And I'll tell you, when given the choice, many people ask, would they rather do public speaking or be stuck in, through the heart with a sword? They choose the, the sword. Uh, the, the fact that you could stand up at your age is, at this point, you talk about investment banking, I mean, I, I'm in finance. It's, it's so not easy just to do what you just did, and to bring then content to the presentation that's well-thought-out. That's everything, and, 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 you know, for my kid, you guys probably know, I don't know if you know Simon or not, Consoli.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That seemed enthusiastic, thank you. But, but, you know, and he's not, to see him standing up and speaking in front of others and being able to formulate complete sentences, words, and thoughts, I'm telling you, that is ninety percent of the battle. I, I would think Mr. Paluso is nodding his head. It's not easy to keep your thoughts straight when presenting to a very judgmental, and in this case, large group. So I really do applaud your effort, I think you guys are outstanding, and I think it's great, yeah.
And Jeff, you should also mention that, as nice as we're all being, um, the judges, when you, when they present, are not so nice. They ask, and I know my husband's the worst, although he was on very good behavior this year, they generally ask very difficult questions. So, you guys have to have this coming at you. I mean, anyone can write something and you can read and present it, but to be able to field those, those really difficult questions, right? That's something that we don't all get to do every day.
Be able to dance when you're being beaten up in this situation is, it's pretty, it's hard. And this is real life, guys.
It was definitely, it was really difficult. But I think that, if I, I think I can speak for all of us, when I say, one of the really great things that was able to help us, I think, was a lot of, uh, Mr. Palowski's words and advice. Especially, uh, we did a lot of projects throughout the beginning, and, like, in the first and second quarters as well, where we had to draft speeches, and we were speaking in front of everybody, you know?
It's like a podium and everything.
Yeah, exactly. And he gave us like feedback and critiques and stuff like that, and I think that was all really helpful for us, especially in a, in a setting like this, where you have to think on your spot, it requires like, kinda like a sixth sense that you gotta develop, and it's not very easy.
It's nice when you know your material, and, and it was very obvious that you did, so, really great. I'm very, very impressed, I think you did great.
We have another East Brunswick alumni that wants to make a comment.
I was gonna say what Mr. Winston said about public speaking, but I wanted to add something. No notes, folks. When you get up there and you can express yourselves like that, that's not just reading material, that's not coming to prepare a speech. That shows me and everyone here that you know the material, you understand the material. And I was thoroughly impressed, uh, with that presentation, with absolutely no notes. So, congratulations on that one, fantastic job.
Thank you, thank you.
These guys have said it all so far, but, uh, the enthusiasm and passion that you guys have was incredible. And the no notes and getting up there and speaking, and what I did notice was there wasn't much "um" and "like" and things like that, so I'm sure you guys practiced that. So I really appreciate the presentation, great job, very impressive.
Thank you so much.
Any advice that you have for the ones that are gonna be in your shoes in just, uh, ten years?
Stay your age.
That's the advice for the parents, the parents want that.
You guys are, you guys are living your best lives.
This is the best lives of your life. It's, 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 it's gonna be harder, might be better, but it's gonna get harder.
It's gonna get harder. I think what they're trying to say is that it's a lot of fun. You're gonna have a great time, and it's gonna be awesome, it's gonna be awesome.
In the words, the words of Ferris Bueller, "Life goes by pretty fast, and if you don't stop and look for a while, you're gonna miss it."
Really?
Enjoy every moment.
Yeah, you can assemble them up here.
I would love a picture of the, the youngest in the, our two groups. Do you want us to kneel, and they'll be on the...
Can we, can we, can we kneel?
Should we kneel?
You absolutely can.
If you wanna take, we'll get both generations.
They're right, yeah.
But they're already thinking about how they can't kneel down. What's that? I wonder if it's picture or anything?
Well, you got a nice kid's picture.
Thank you, Mr. Paluso. Thank you so much to both groups, it's, it's a tie, I have to tell you.
Great job.
Um, I am actually, thank you, it was so good to have you both here. Um, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, because, um, some of our young ones might want to, um, go home and go to sleep.
Some are older ones wanna go home and go to sleep.
Some of the really old ones wanna go home.
They have homework, yes.
So we'll do that. So we'll be back in five minutes, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
I feel bad being up here, 'cause I can't follow in the footsteps of either of them well. But, um, this is always a fun one, because we get to do some resolutions. So the first resolution of appreciation tonight is for the Parent Teacher Association. So we move that the Board of Education approve the following resolution, whereas our PTA spend countless hours supporting our eleven schools and more than eighty-three hundred students, contributing greatly to their school communities and helping promote a positive school culture. And whereas our PTAs fundraise, fundraise extensively so that they may gift technology and playground equipment, fund mini-grants to teachers, provide scholarships, and so much more. And whereas the PTAs generously arrange for and fund special programs, authors and illustrators, music and dance, history and science, assemblies and workshops that enhance and enrich the learning environment for our students. And whereas all those involved in our PTAs are wonderful examples for our students, modeling good citizenship and the importance of doing one's share to make the world a better place. Now therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education gratefully acknowledges the incredible support of the PTAs and their dedicated service and devotion to students and staff. Thank you to Balmunro PTA and President Robin Pastili, who I believe is here, right? Thank you so much. Oh, yay, see?
She started at Balmunro and Kindergarten.
See, go, exactly. I'm so proud of us. Okay, um, Central PTA and President Courtney Blumig? Am I saying it right? Nope, she's not here. Okay, Chittick PTA and President Nidhi Sinha? Churchill PTA and President Jamie Wasserman, who unfortunately was not here. Um, and East Brunswick High School PTSA and my boss and president, Wanda Miller. Since I work for her, she's not here as well, she's probably working hard for us. Frost PTA and President Kim Gudmaske. Am I saying it wrong, Kim, I apologize. Hammershold PTA and President Mary Ann Tanius? Or, I know, I know, oh, no.
I'm sorry, I was helping.
Erwin PTA and President Nada Soto? Lawrenceburg PTA and President Kelly Riley? Memorial PTA and President Brienne Mori? And my school of alumni-hood, Warnstofer PTA and President Heather James and Alicia Tierra. No, you never, no, 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 you stay with the schools. Further be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education would like to extend a very special thank you to the President of PTA Presidents Council, Jamie Wasserman, who has supported and encouraged the PTAs in all of their efforts. May I have a mo, see they're clapping. Mrs. Wass, would you like to make the motion? So moved. Seconded by Mrs. Becker, is there any discussion? Who would like to, I should say, who would like to start the discussion? Mrs. Becker, Lawrenceburg PTA President Extraordinaire.
So for you ladies who are here, and all the ladies and, or gents who aren't, um, as a former PTA president, uh, I will tell you that you work a lot harder than we do. Your presence in the school, I'd say you're probably there every day, every other day, every school event. Um, if you have a fundraiser and people don't show up, you're the ones who fill in for all their shifts. You guys do everything, and it's, it's so amazing. We talk about, um, things like the foundation, which is there to enrich the lives of our students and staff. You guys are on the ground, boots on the ground, every single day, making sure your schools are a better place for the kids and the staff. You do incredible work, and you don't get thanked enough. So we thank you so much.
Very, very true. Another past PTA president, Mrs. Reese.
Thank you, thank you, I just wanted to thank you as well. Uh, we know how hard you work, we appreciate all that you do, and the amount of fundraising that you do for the district and for the kids is amazing. And, uh, I mean, our president, Lori Lacks, also has been very active in PTA and throughout the years. And we, we know how hard you work, and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, and I will tell you, Heather said that we get rid of her after this year, you don't leave the PTA. You just, you don't do it, and if you work for someone like Wanda, 'cause I'm on the P, the, the parent board with her at the high school, I stayed on after my kids were gone from Hammershold, because I couldn't say no to the PTA. So you, you may find yourself wandering back. Yes, 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 it's a beautiful thing, and we can't thank you enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absolutely. Congratulations, and thank you again to yourselves and to your cohorts that couldn't be here this evening.
Oh, and I forgot to mention Karen Mandler was a PTA president as well.
This is good timing, then. So, whereas administrative professionals are partners in the education of our students, and whereas administrative professionals play a major role in creating an environment that is conducive to learning in our schools, and whereas administrative professionals provide valuable services to our students, faculty, staff, parents, and other members of the community, and whereas administrative professionals are essential to the efficient, effective operation of the schools, and whereas administrative professionals facilitate important communication between the schools, parents, and other members of the community, and whereas administrative professionals help to maintain the excellent reputation of the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, April 26, 2023, as Administrative Professionals Day in the district, and expresses appreciation to our administrative professionals for their dedication and commitment to our students and our schools. Motion? You're skipping ahead, though.
No, to give to you, to give to her, like we just did.
I have to call the motion.
You didn't do that last time.
Yes, I did. She ties my son's shoes years ago at the VFW run when he was not ready to do it himself. David go above and beyond. I'm kidding with you.
Mrs. Lacks, perhaps I missed it, but did you take the vote?
Oh, look at that. Now I'm as bad as him, see?
Senior moment.
Senior moment, absolutely. It's not my East Brunswick education. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, voices. See? Look at that. See, we're even now.
Who said we're even?
Okay. Our board meetings are nothing if not more fun, right? Okay. Oh, yay! So, whereas all members of the faculty and staff contribute to the excellence of the school district, and whereas all members of the faculty and staff are partners in the education of our students, and whereas all members of the faculty and staff play an essential role in creating a welcoming and secure learning atmosphere in which all students are able to achieve to the fullest extent, and whereas the dedication and commitment of all members of the faculty and staff are directly related to the outstanding accomplishments of our students, and whereas there is no greater legacy than the sound education of our students receive, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims May 7 through 13, 2023, as Faculty and Staff Appreciation Week, and commends all members of the faculty and support staff for their time and effort they devote to our students.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. I'm waiting on this one. This is one of my personal favorites because I talked about staying at the school. It was to be able to do this Backshot Staff Appreciation Week, so that was one of my favorites. I'm not going to do the vote yet because I'm going to call for more discussion. See? This time I'm on. I have a very quiet board this evening. But again, you know, one of the things is, these are so well-written that it really does say it all, because we would not be who we are without our faculty and staff. And here's two of the greatest, and another East Brunswick alumni. We're having a great alumni night. So, I will call for the vote now. All in favor? Oh, I wasn't trying to rush the discussion.
I wasn't. I just thought we were going out of order. It's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, he's rubbing off on me.
You're having so much fun.
I'm having fun. All right. See, but I like this, because the resolutions are good. These are people that really do make our job, make us look good, and make our jobs look easier, so.
Oh, it's cute.
Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the child nutrition staff are committed to providing healthy nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the individuals who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the day of Friday, May 5, 2023, is School Lunch Hero Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Public Schools express its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends our good work on behalf of the children.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker. Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. And before I call for discussion, I'm going to ask Karen and everyone to bring your attention to the screen. They say a picture says a thousand words, but do we have any board members? I would like to add a few. Mrs. Becker?
There are child nutrition staff members in this district that I owe a tremendous amount of money to, going back quite a few, quite a few years, so the interest alone would be prohibitive. But there were so many days where my kids would come to school and forget their lunch money, or somehow a nickel would fall through their pocket, or, I don't know. It was something every day. And I knew that there were heroes, which is really an appropriate, great word, working in the schools. And you take care of the kids, not to sound corny, but you feed their souls. You do. You provide them with not just the nourishment, but a very necessary break in their day, where they can sit, not in a classroom setting, maybe a little socializing, and eat. You are there for comfort, with a smile, always support. When you see a kid coming through the line, maybe with a sad face, you really are heroes in our district, and we don't, I know this for a fact, thank you enough. So, thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Mrs. Chu?
I just want to just make a comment to address all the categories, because this is collectively the people that take care of our kids all day, and take such great care of our kids. So, you know, from the administrative staff to support staff and just everyone. It's, you know, having sent, you know, two kids through the district, you know, the kids come back safe, you know that they come back with great stories, they have relationships with people that they've built, whether it's from the lunch line, or the teacher, or a security guard. You know, these are things that make memorable moments for the kids as part of their school experience, and it's people that make it happen. So, thank you.
It is, and it stays. It's funny, you know, everyone talks about teachers, but you're right, these are relationships that stay with our kids as well, because my son, back when he was at Memorial, and he was this big, now he's this big, but when he was this big, I remember we always did stuff for Staff Appreciation Week, and he always wanted to go and to do something special for Ms. Donna. And that was always, you know, the first thing, and he always remembered her, and he was just, it's something really nice, because I, you know, I said, okay, who do you want to get? This teacher, that teacher, and he always remembered her because she always remembered him, and that's, you know, Suzanne is right, and Vicki's right. You just, so, I'm thrilled that this is a new resolution that we're doing, and on behalf of the board, I see we have a lot of our child nutrition people, and we'd love to have you all come on up.
Yeah.
And before I do that, so that Bernie doesn't yell at me, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, voices carried. Vote, vote carries. See, it's funny, because you get so excited with the resolutions, so.
How about if we get you all around up here?
Over there?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
a student, and what's for lunch when I was a student is a lot different than what's for lunch today. And I appreciate all of you for all that you do, from the creation of the menu to the execution and delivery of the menus. All of our students really benefit from your work, so I appreciate it.
Okay, and for the board, Chef Jim, I was just told that is Chef Jim. So, not only do these people feed our children, but Chef Jim gets to feed the board, right? So, we should have an extra. Yes.
Uh-oh, Jim, you better run.
Joe.
He's not giving it up. You want that recipe, that soup? Run, Jim.
We want recipes, Jim.
Chef Jim, you are my idol. I have never tasted soup in my life, like the soup you make.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I want that recipe.
It's a trade secret. I'm sorry, I can't. Stand firm, go and give it to her.
We were going to, we decided, either with sea bass or the filet mignon tonight, but we went with the chicken.
Sorry. You really don't want to say that, because it would, for members of the public, that's not true.
Yes, ever, ever. Soup.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you all, because it really truly is a partnership, as Mrs. Chu said, for all of the groups here tonight. We have our PTA, our parents are a part of the process, the staff, and Chef Jim. So, you all make it work, so congratulations to all of our presentations this evening. So, yes? Sure. Yep, okay. All right, so we are on to the good of the cause for the public this evening. The Board of Education...
Medicaid.
Oh, okay. Was it something I said?
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
The Mass exodus, right?
Chef Jim, come back.
Chef Jim. Good night. That's right. Okay. See, we're back, we still have some diehard fans. This is good. It's, we always have to have kids here. That's the draw, right? I would come out to watch the kids. So, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of importance and community interest. I'm having a rough time tonight. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board should provide a public comment at every meeting of the board, and a participant will be limited to three minutes' duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. And I always remind the public that this is your time to speak to the board. Please never take our silence as not caring about the issues. If there is follow-up that needs to be done, the lovely ladies in the front will take your name and information to make sure that we can follow up. So, that being said, are there any members of the public this evening that would like to speak to the board? Very quiet group. All right. Seeing none, then, I am going to close the public portion and move on to our agenda for the evening. Before I ask for a motion to move tonight's agenda, is there anything that needs separating out this evening? Okay.
And if I may, just for a reminder to the board, the minutes are not included on the agenda for...
Yes, item three, under Board of Education, minutes have been strapped this evening. So, if anyone was not here, you do not have to abstain on that portion of it. Then I am going to ask for a motion for this evening's agenda, please. Moved by Mrs. Becker. Seconded by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion on any items on this evening's agenda? Okay, well, I myself have one question. I see the Fairview trip two. That's, this is our second part, because they got the one day, is that what this is? They're doing a second? I don't know who I'm asking this to.
Overnight.
It's the overnight, but we did, so it's the same one, it's still the same one, they're just doing, it says Fairview two.
One night, yeah, not two. Right. We're at one night now, overnight?
We're at one night.
For this year.
Okay. All right, so that's, so, no, I may have asked this before, so from now on, or is this going to be a one-night trip for these kids?
Well, that's for discussion to see if it goes back to what it used to be, right now, which is a one-night trip.
So, for these kids, they will still get the overnight experience?
Right.
But, and they're still going up, okay.
Yep. Yeah, one of the things that Ryan Higgins has worked on very hard is about the experience the students will have in this compressed timeframe, but we also have to be aware of the, there's a lot of logistics in having the students at Fairview, especially with nursing services and all of that support. So, that's a critical piece. So, as we, as part of our recovery process, and we're still recovering, we're going to, you know, test it this year, and we'll then analyze it after we're done and see what we can recommend for years out.
And will we be able to do any more supplemental, like in-school activities around this, so that the students still get a little bit more of an experience, or they're getting the one overnight?
They're getting supplemental in the school already, you know? Yeah, it's part of the plan.
I think it's such a great experience, so I just want to, I mean, I know, the world is the world that we live in, I just wanted to make sure that some of it, that can, I mean, I know the Dallinbaks experience, you know, there's certain things that they can do locally, I just wasn't sure. Okay. That was my question on that. Thank you. Sorry, everyone's being so quiet tonight. There was one other one I wanted to... I apologize. I will ask my question. It was actually more of a comment, so, look at you all, they're so quiet. Okay, everybody wants to go back to closed session. So, all right, then I would like to ask the secretary, will please call the rule on this evening's agenda?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes. Motion carries. Bringing us to new and or old business committee reports information items and for the good of the cause for the board. Okay, I will defer to you.
Just real quick.
Yes.
The board negotiation committee with the Principal Supervisor Association, the district, has come to a tentative agreement, I'm very pleased to announce, and there will be more details forthcoming. Thank you to board members and administrators, the union, and on the board for all the time and effort spent into coming to a tentative agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. So, one of the things I wanted to mention quickly was, you saw what grants can do from the Education Foundation, and last night was our partner in Excellence Dinner, and I just had a few comments about it. One is congratulations to our very own Dr. Joyce Bowley, who was one of the honorees of the education. Because it was a terrific event, and the district truly, it's truly a great partnership with the Education Foundation, and Dr. Bowley, along with Katie Matiesewski, East Brunswick alumni, Douglas Shorpe, East Brunswick alumni, and Susan Mizerak, fabulous, longtime East Brunswick teacher. It was really a special night. And unfortunately, it was a hard night for some of our board members, so we didn't have, a lot of board members were unable to be with us, but I will say this, that the ones that were, Mr. Corangelo, and Mr. Winston, and myself, were all East Brunswick alumni. So, again, it was a fun alumni evening. We did have our induction into the Alumni Hall of Fame for a classmate of mine, Anne Milgram, and, and actually, I have to be personal for a second, I apologize, I will take 10 seconds to say this, but I did have a proud mommy moment, because my daughter is the Education Foundation Student Association President, and it was a beautiful, a beautiful experience for me getting to see her speak up there. So, you see how I am flubbing things, and this is what happens at 50, so it was amazing to see, you know, these young kids, you talk about how they do that, so. But kudos to the Education Foundation, because it was another beautifully-run evening, and to Dr. Bowley, we're just so impressed with you, so. Anyone else this evening that would like to share something? Mrs. Gwass?
I would. Well, I wanted to thank everything that Mr. Malta did, and the athletics department, and Dr. Venala, because signing day, I had never had the experience to be there, and it was such just a great afternoon. I couldn't decide if it was going to be something that was like formal and anxiety-producing, or, and it was just right in the perfect spot. The kids had the best time, they were so happy to be there to celebrate their accomplishments with their friends, so that was great. It turns out, I've turned into quite the sports mom, and I was at the high school during the EB Invitational, not to pick up a track child, we don't have that, but I was there to pick up a child, and it was amazing.
So again, it was a fun alumni evening. We did have our induction into the Alumni Hall of Fame for a classmate of mine, Ann Milgram, and, and actually, I have to be personal for a second, I apologize, I will take 10 seconds to say this, but I did have a proud mommy moment because my daughter is the Education Foundation Student Association President and it was a beautiful, a beautiful experience for me getting to see her speak up there. So you see how I am flubbing things and this is what happens at 50, so it was amazing to see, you know, these young kids, you talk about how they do that, so. But kudos to the Education Foundation because it was another beautifully-run evening and to Dr. Bowley, we're just so impressed with you, so. Anyone else this evening that would like to share something? Mrs. Gwass?
I would. Well, I wanted to thank everything that Mr. Malta did and the Athletics Department and Dr. Vannella because Signing Day, I had never had the experience to be there and it was such just a great afternoon. I couldn't decide if it was going to be something that was like formal and anxiety-producing or, and it was just right in the perfect spot. The kids had the best time. They were so happy to be there to celebrate their accomplishments with their friends. So that was great. It turns out, I've turned into quite the sports mom and I was at the high school during the EB Invitational, not to pick up a track child, we don't have that, but I was there to pick up a child and it was amazing, like just to see all the schools here. I wanted, I actually did a loop and got out of the car and took some pictures to see so many kids from so many schools out on the field and the concession stands had the barbecue going and there were just kids on blankets everywhere. It just had such a wonderful, happy event vibe to it. Everyone was just getting along, kids from all over the place. And then unfortunately, I drove about a half hour away and the skies opened up and there was hail and I think that 1,800 kids came inside that afternoon rather suddenly. But it was just such an amazing event. I wish we could do more of that because it was just good to see so many different schools represented here in such a friendly competition.
That is so nice. And you know, it's funny when you just said that about, you know, this is an exciting, you know, time for you as a parent with your son. I think a lot of people don't realize that we're Board of Education members, but we're all parents as well. And so we celebrate your successes when you see the Athletes of the Month up there and when you see the IPO students and as I said, you know, Mr. Winston's son was part of the IPO presentation, you know, Mrs. Gwass's son, signing day, so, you know, for some of our other members, their children have already graduated. They're, you know, they're a little ahead of us and, you know, for some of, some of our other members, we have some younger children coming up, but it's, you know, it's been quite a fun time because, you know, I think, you know, Mrs. Reese had a daughter inducted into the National Honor Society and I got to meet Mr. Corangelo's lovely daughter who was a real trooper because she sat at the table with us, with the old people. So, yeah, so I just like to remind people of that, you know, we are your Board of Education members, but we're also parents and as I said, we share in all of the excitement with you as well and it's very nice when one of our own gets to have something like a signing day, so. I think I've talked enough for this evening, though. I apologize. I'm long-winded. So I am getting the stare, which means?
No.
No, I'm not. Oh, I'm being cut off. So I, I'm going to see if anyone else, Mrs. Chu, I'm going to call on Mrs. Chu.
Don't do that.
I'm reluctant to do that.
Don't do that.
Are you sure? I can keep talking, actually. Maybe I should keep talking now.
So I, I want to let you all know that today's going to be my last time sitting up here with you all. For personal reasons, I've decided to call it retire, call it resign from the Board of Education effective Monday, April 24th. So I joined this board about nine years ago and when I became a board member, people said to me, why are you doing this? Your youngest child is a senior, he's going to be out, like, you know, why are you doing this? So I'm a product of public schools and, you know, I'm, I'm who I am because of public schools and my kids are where they are because of the teachers and the administrators and the staff and everybody that makes the public school experience what it is. So it's just a small way to give back a little bit of my time for these past years to, to get, you know, to get to know everybody a little bit better, to, to help where I could. I hope I did help in some way. But, you know, I got to really be just even more impressed, if, if that were possible, by seeing behind the scenes what, what you all have to go through, what you have to deal with, the challenges you, you have to overcome in order to take care of all the kids that we take care of. And it is just so impressive. So mostly, I just want to thank all of you for the experience that I've had here on the board over the last nine years. I'm going to miss you all sitting up here, but I'll be around, I'm not disappearing. You know, I, we have a lot of, of work ahead of us. I've learned a lot over the last nine years. This is a great board. You guys are going to do great things, you're going to overcome the challenges that we have ahead of us. Mostly it's about, you know, the kids demonstrating, you know, we don't always agree, but, you know, we fight over some things, but at the end, you come out with an answer and it's going to be the right answer. So I look forward to seeing more great things from this board, sitting from the other side and just will continue to appreciate everything that you all do. I'm going to miss you all and she's going to make me cry.
We're going to miss you and this is, see, I should have kept talking. I told you, if I didn't stop talking, then she couldn't have made the announcement. Yeah, it's almost a decade of service and Suzanne and I actually, back before she came on the board, she was one of the members of community programs when I used to run community programs, which is how I first got to know you, even before you were a board member, which was one of the reasons we were so thrilled to have you on the board. You are just someone who has dedicated yourself. She's a, she's a complete powerhouse in her own right professionally, but she's just, you're such an amazing woman. Everything that you do is just wonderful and your kids, they are products of this education system for sure, but they are also products of you and Joe and just the wonderful upbringing you gave them and getting to see a glimpse into your life over the past nine years. It's very hard to say goodbye to you.
It's not goodbye.
It's not goodbye. It's very hard to see you not sitting up here with us and you will be greatly missed because you're, you're bright, everything you've brought to this board over these years has just been, you're, you're an irreplaceable type and, you know, I say that knowing that we have no choice but to put someone in that seat, but what you've done over these years, you really have made a difference. If you're wondering and you're thinking, did I do something? You did. You absolutely did. I, I'm, I'd love to hear from other board members because I will probably start to cry, so, Mr. Corangelo?
I'm so impressed by you. This came, you know, quick news, but I've learned so much, really. You're a brilliant, incredible person, so I wish you the best in your adventures and the rest of your life. And like you said, you're not basically leaving forever, but thank you so much for guiding me. You may not realize you do, but every committee, we're on and things like that, I've always listened and I've always learned from you, so thank you for helping me grow as a board member.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, Mrs. Reese, I'm sorry.
I'm a little overclapped, what can I tell you? It's, you're a wonderful person in addition to being so professional, so educated, so balanced, you're the voice of reason. We're, we're going to be amiss without you. But I know you're nearby and we can call on you and, and like Ms. Lacks has said, I mean, and Mr. Corangelo, you're irreplaceable, but we're fortunate to have had you as long as we did. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Mrs. Becker?
Sometimes less is more. Thank you. You've been our colleague, our partner in crime. You are my friend. Thank you for your incredible brain and your heart and you have my heart and soul always. Thanks is not enough to say for everything you've done for this district. You will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Sizmar?
No words. How about a standing ovation?
Oh, yay, Mark. Yay.
I don't deserve that, but thank you. No, I really don't deserve that. Maybe if I did 20 years, maybe I would have deserved that. I really, I really don't deserve that. Thank you. Thank you. I'm humbled. Thank you.
Not like that, not like all of us. You're going to tear somebody out, you know. So Suzanne, you said maybe if you stayed 20 years, but I've done the calculation and East Brunswick, it's like dog years, so every year, it's like equivalent of seven. And I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate all your support. You, you and I have had, you know, you came on the board right after I came on the board or I was superintendent and, well, officially, I'm a non-voting member of the board, so that's, that's not an act, that wasn't a senior moment, by the way.
It was not a senior moment.
Okay. But I do appreciate all the support because people like me cannot be successful without supportive board members and, and you've always asked challenging questions and, and have been thoughtful and so I just wanted to say I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, absolutely. So I hope to grow up to be like you. I just do. I don't know if you all could hear, but Suzanne said I'm humbled. You are always humble and professional and very quietly brilliant and, but the thing I admire the most is the thing people don't get to see, you just have that backbone of steel when you are doing what's best for kids and you do not back down when you should not back down and I just admire you so greatly for your poise, but your strength at the same time. I'm going to miss you terribly. If you want to just like sit here, even if you retire, that'd be nice.
Thank you.
I know, I don't want the meeting to end now. Okay. It's very bittersweet. I'm thrilled for you, but we're sad and she'll come back. We say to the students, right? She'll come back.
I'll say, I'll be out there.
Okay. Okay. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Actually, I was looking at Mrs. Chu.
Second.
I'm going to let you move it tonight.
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Chu, second by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Figured you had to get the last motion, right?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
That too.
Well, two on our panel list.
Well, I'll do that too, yeah. The less public.